Is there motion to come out of executive session?
So moved. Second.
Councilman Asito secured by Councilman Farina. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Sarah Kalesley?
Here.
Councilman Stychos?
Here.
Councilman Botts?
Yes.
Point of no hesitation, we're voting on the...
This is to come out of executive session. I'm taking the here as a yes.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Asito?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Favickio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanning?
Yes.
President, motion to steal the minutes of the second session?
Motion made to steal the minutes, a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Sarah Kalesley?
Yes.
Councilman Steve Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Don Botts?
Yes.
Councilman Paul Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Mario Asito?
Yes.
Councilman Richard Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Michael Favickio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Michael Farina?
Yes.
Council President John Lanning?
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now adjourn, special session adjourned. There we go. I now call this meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. At this time, I'd ask everyone to turn off their cell phones. The clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Kalesley?
Here.
Councilman Steve Stychos?
Here.
Councilman Don Botts?
Here.
Councilman Paul Arquette?
Present.
Councilman Mario Asito?
Present.
Councilman Richard Santa Maria?
Present.
Councilman Michael Favickio?
Present.
Council Vice President Michael Farina?
Present.
Council President John Lanning?
Present. Is there a motion dispensed with the mea- reading of minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Here.
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Botts?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Asito?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Favickio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanning?
Yes. Will everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Josh Miller. Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Are there any public acknowledgements or commendations? Hearing none. We'll go on to public hearings. Are any members of the public who would like to speak on any docketed item? You're limited to four minutes. Please step forward, give your name and address to the record.
My name is Joseph Dugan. I live at 183 Linden Road.
Pursuant here, pursuing.
Pursuing, fair.
That's the bottom of the line.
My name is Joseph Dugan. I live at 183 Linden Road. And I'm here representing myself, but I'm also a lawyer. So I'm representing people in my neighborhood who are also here on the issue of Sebagi building. You should have gotten a petition that's been signed by a number of people in our neighborhood. And the petition is request the mayor and the city council to demand that BASF Global Corporation demolish and remove three buildings on Mill Street. For over thirty years, Sebagi has stood there abandoned, unheeded, unmaintained, and an eyesore, diminishing property values and negatively affecting the neighborhood's quality of life. It's a fire hazard, a source of vermin, a probable site of dangerous chemicals, a magnet for kids looking for trouble, and a sometime resonance for squatters. It should be turned- it should be torn down. BAS and everybody else knows this, but they don't want to bear the expense. The mayor and the city council should demand that BAS remove these buildings, these three buildings, in a reasonable time, and the city should use its influence, along with the mayor, to have this done. Thirty years is enough for this building. We are asking that the mayor become proactive on this issue. BAS is not going to do anything unless somebody pushes them, alright? They say they want to sell the building. Nobody's going to buy it. This is not some old building made of nineteenth-century brick with oak floors. This is a fifties, low-quality building, and it should be removed. The city has leverage here because BASF is going to want something from the city, mainly in the form of variances and in various other types of concessions. We are asking the city to expedite getting this- getting this building torn down. We want- we want that the plumbing inspector, the housing inspector, all the people that might have an interest in this, be directed to inspect this building and bring a current, not some ten-year-old situation, but a current estimate of what's the condition of that building. Because I can tell you this, if that building burns down and houses burn down with it, I can tell you as a trial lawyer that their insurance companies are going to take assignments from every individual whose house they have to pay for, and they're going to go after who's responsible. And I can guarantee you that if the city does not act, it will be one of them held responsible. So I'm asking you, I guess repeating to you, that we would like the city council to do something about this building. It's time. It is- has no useful purpose, and it is deteriorated to the point where it is a health issue. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak on any docketed item?
Hello, my name is John Lamp, I'm from Robert Circle. And I also am here for the no BASF. We'd like the city council and the mayor's office to craft a letter to BASF requesting that these buildings be demolished. Which I just saw handout that Mr. Stychos had gotten from BASF explaining, you know, some of the things that they've been doing to the site over there. I don't know if the city council is truly in tune with the actual things that are going on over there. The site itself is an eyesore. The site itself has been there for thirty years, abandoned, growing weeds. Recently BASF decided to de-grub the property, and that meant that they were going to go in there with big machines and take down all of the brush that was adjacent to their property on Mill Street. And they also decided that they were going to remove mature pine trees, perfectly healthy, that served as a buffer between the building and the neighbors, of which I'm one. Well, I can tell you one thing, I've been living at that house since nineteen eighty-four. I've been paying taxes in this city since nineteen eighty-four, and it's the very first time I have ever had to call the rat police from the city of Cranston to come over to my home and bait my deck where I sit and have coffee on a morning- on an everyday- everyday in the morning basis. It's unacceptable. I don't know where you guys live, and gals, alright? But I can tell you one thing, that it would be unacceptable for you to come out of your house and have a family of rats living beneath your deck. I've got a nice house, alright? With all of the increases in the taxes that this city has had over the past two or three or four years, I'm kinda angry about the fact that I've got vermin coming from across the street into my home. And I'm sure that if it happened to you, or you, or anyone else in this room, you'd be kinda angry too, wouldn't you? The site has weeds, alright? The brick facade is falling from the building. The windows are still open. The property is ill-kept, alright? I mean, it's just- it's ridiculous, and I understand that the city's getting tax revenue from BASF, but enough is enough, these buildings are old, they gotta go. There was a- there was a study done for the brownstone to be able to reduce the properties. There was a plan in place from Sebagi to have those buildings ripped down by two thousand and twelve. I'd like to know what exactly happened to that plan. I don't know, are you- is anybody on the city council aware of that plan and what happened to it? There's pictures out there, there's a plan out there, BASF supported this plan. They just sent a memo to Mr. Stychos stating that they've explored- how did it go here? Let me get my glasses on, I'm getting old, guys, I'm tired of doing this. In a letter of two thousand and twelve to Mr. Stychos, BASF stated that they were investigating the cost of demolishing these two buildings and asbestos abatement conducted by trained professionals. I think it's time, you know? And we're looking- I got- I got a team of gray-haired energetic people who have had enough. We've collected over almost five hundred signatures on a petition that we'll give to you. And in that petition, alright, it states that we want those buildings gone. I can't emphasize enough how much the community has had their fill of the lies and, you know, the misdeeds of corporations over there. I mean, you know, they said that they conducted an experiment to determine the viability of those trees that were over there. I gotta tell you, when those trees came down, all of those trees were healthy and living, alright? There was not a reason in the world to bring those trees down. They also said that they went and talked to every neighbor over there. I got neighbors here right now who were the first people contacted that BASF came to them and said that every other neighbor has agreed to tear down the trees when they were the first one contacted. I mean, come on. I mean, enough is enough, guys. So the only thing that we're asking you to do is to hear the voice of your constituents, because it's a loud voice. In a matter of days, we collected enough signatures, five hundred signatures and more coming in. I mean, there's a loud enough voice to have you guys simply craft a letter asking them to tear down the buildings. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on any docketed item? Please try to limit your speaking to four minutes. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Sam Parenti, and I live at fifteen Lauryn Court. And I'm wondering, is it permissible to speak about the second page, the financial- the last item on the financial subcommittee of this committee? Is that- is that in order now?
It's on the docket, you may speak on it.
Okay. What I'd like to say is, there is been- from what I gather, there's a difference of opinion on the viability of the plan that concerns the firefighters. Now firefighters are, in my opinion, highly respected, and I certainly do, and I have friends that are firefighters. The question that I have is that apparently Mr. Stychos is saying that there is a difference of opinion on the funding of that item. And I'm concerned about that. As a taxpayer, I'm finding that my taxes, and I'm sure I speak for many of the other people in Cranston, a very good friend of mine, I want you to know, so that you consider this when you look at that item, and I'll make a suggestion on- as to what I think should be done. But a very close friend of mine, who lives in my neighborhood, is spending twenty percent of his income on city taxes. Now that's outrageous. And if this item is going to incur further taxes for that individual and the rest of us, then I think what needs to be done, since there is apparently a difference of opinion on what this is going to cost the city, so that we don't repeat things like placing a concrete batching plant in a residential neighborhood that costs the city several million dollars to get out of, or where the school committee signs a contract with the teachers' union, not knowing what the cost of the contract is going to entail. So before any decision is made on that item, I think it's only fair that the council get some expert analysis of what the funding is going to cost the city. And that's my point. And I hope you take that seriously, because friends of mine, like the one that I told you about, having a very difficult time. Now, some of you people have very good jobs. A lot of us are retired, and we're up to our necks in the taxes that we have to pay to the city. I thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on any docketed item?
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. Hold the letter representing the firefighters. Usually my job, when my name is the other name on the tentative agreement, is to get up here and try and tell you what a good deal this is and to sell it to you. But you know what the tentative agreement is, and I'm not going to attempt to sell it to you, because I think it's a very good deal for the city and a fair deal for the firefighters. We- part of this deal, I'll make a couple of highlights. Part of this deal is another two-year pay freeze, which we're coming off a two-year pay freeze, which we did in the middle of a contract three years ago to help the city out in tough financial times. So why is the union president, my advocating to you, to pass a fair deal for the firefighters? Because I think in the last few years, your firefighters have shown that they're willing to come back to the table and help the city out. I did the raises we've received during this administration while some of you were also sitting here as councilpeople. And we've averaged one point eight percent in pay raises for the last six years. That's not even the cost of living. So you know what's in the- you know what's in the tentative agreement. There's a two-year pay freeze, there's also several firsts in it. For the first time, firefighters have an option to go into the health savings account, which that number's not even figured into the fiscal note, because we don't know how many will take advantage of that. Also in there is the first-time copayment in retirement for firefighters. That might be the first fire union in the state that has agreed to that. And I believe we're the first fire union in the state to start paying OPEB benefits, which we won't see the benefits of doing that now. That'll come in ten or fifteen years when we get to the position where we are with pensions now, that they were never properly funded. Now we've started to properly fund OPEB benefits. So hopefully the city's not looking at a deficit in ten to fifteen years. So we would like you to pass this tentative agreement tonight. What we get out of it is three years of a contract. Where it's always best to have a contract in place. I'll address a couple of the issues that were brought up in the finance committee that led to a couple of council people voting against this, because I don't know what the feeling is from the rest of you. But Councilwoman Lee, as far as the raises, you said one of the reasons you were voting against this is because of the structure of the raises. You said it was confusing, because they were half-year. Those raises, the way we structured them, they saved the city money. Obviously, if we take a three percent raise on the first year of a fiscal year, we get that raise all year. By taking raises the last year of the contracts, it's really a one-year, a one-day pay raise. So that was structured that way to save the city money, and that's part of the city's savings. The other issue you brought up is that there was no 401K for new hireeers. Well, I will stand here and tell you, and not try and be flippant, that as long as I'm president of this local, you will never see a 401K as a pension benefit for firefighters. Because 401Ks were never meant to be a pension. You can ask any financial advisor that, that doesn't work for Wall Street. 401Ks were strictly supposed to be to complement social security. That's why 401s were created in nineteen seventy-eight, to complement, to supplement social security. You should know that firefighters in Cranston do not get social security. Never paid into it, the city never paid into it. That was a decision made long ago before I was here, but we don't get social security. So when we retire, our pensions are it, that's it, we get nothing else. So I will never risk a 401K as being a pension for one of my firefighters. The only people, and this has only come in the last maybe five to seven years, that 401Ks have become part of pensions. And that came from the greedy pigs from Wall Street, because now they can get money from the 401Ks. We've seen it in the last year alone, when the state of Rhode Island went to 401Ks. One year ago, the hedge fund managers made fifty-three million dollars in administrative fees this year. So that's all 401Ks for pensions are. They're a Wall Street game scam for them to make money. So you will never see a pension for firefighters in the city of Cranston as long as I'm the president. They just don't deserve that. And the last thing is Councilman Stychos. I disagree with the gentleman that got up here, that an expert should look into this.
Hold the letter, could you kind of- certainly, four minutes.
An expert has looked into it, your finance director is an expert, that's why he's your Director of Finance. He's looked into this. Councilman, I thank you for sharing your fiscal note with me at the end of the finance meeting. I looked at it, I know this is going to shock you, but I disagree with you. I will leave you with this. Mr. Strom has been doing this fiscal note like this for the last six years. There's never been a time, I don't think, where at the end of a fiscal year that Mr. Strom has had to come to the council and say, "The salary line items for these unions are wrong, because my fiscal note was wrong." This is the way it's always been done. I'm not a financial wizard, but checking with people, this is the way a fiscal note's been done. But let's say Councilman Stychos is right, the way he did his fiscal note. Then what I didn't see is, if you want to carry the raises through the whole year of the contract, you have to do it for the concessions too. And I think if you did that, I think if you take the two-year pay freeze and carry that through the life of the contract, I think you will see that the numbers are pretty close. And if that is the case, if that's the way it should have been done, then three years ago, when we opened our contract and we gave you back three million dollars in concessions, that's nearly doubled if you want to do it the way Councilman Stychos did it. I'll leave you with one thing. Thank you for letting me go a little longer, Council President, I'll leave you with one thing. You know, sometimes you gotta look at the experts, and you gotta listen to them. I liken this to when we were sitting here last year, and the councilman made a proposal to remove the Personnel Director from the charter. Everybody in this room knew you couldn't do that. Legal experts said you couldn't do that. We went ahead and did it anyways, and we're forty-five thousand dollars in the hole now, and who knows how much more money we're going to spend on that. So sometimes you have to listen to the experts. And in all my years of doing fiscal notes, I've been doing this for twenty-eight years, negotiating for the firefighters, not just in Cranston, but around the state, and this is the way fiscal notes have been done. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public to speak on any docketed item?
Council President, my name is Peter Lopola. I'm the Director of Planning for the city of Cranston, and I'm basically here, again, like the ordinance committee, to answer any questions that the council may have on the two zoning ordinances that are before the council regarding floodplain. If you have questions, I'll gladly answer them when you take it up, I can answer them now. I'll just briefly state that what is before you is an update of the existing floodplain regulations. That update is a requirement set by FEMA. It's a requirement that we must comply with in order to continue the city's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. We don't have floodplain regulations, we can't- the residents of the city can't buy flood insurance. It's a mandatory requirement. And I'll sit down, most of you were at the ordinance committee. If you have questions, I'll gladly answer them if you- when and if you ask.
Thank you, Mr. Lopola. Anybody else in the public like to speak on any docketed item? Seeing no one, I close the public hearing section of this council meeting. Next we'll take up resolutions. Resolution authorized the city of Cranston's Public Works Department to designate the commemorative name Olivia Culpo Way on Albert Avenue, street signs, sponsored by Councilman Favickio and Botts. Councilman Favickio, would you like to speak on this particular resolution?
Thank you, Council President. I was fortunate enough to be here last session when Olivia Culpo won the Miss Rhode Island and the Miss Universe Pageant, something that may never occur again in this city, but it's a great honor for the somewhat, you know, coming from this small town to win some prize so big. And it's a pleasure to recommend that this resolution be put forward and passed so that we can have it commemorative way. It's not going to change the street name, but it is going to commemorate her success, and I think she's represented Cranston well, and I would ask that my colleagues vote in favor of this.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. In order to consider the resolution for passage this evening, we need a motion to suspend Rule thirty-four B.
Motion to suspend Rule thirty-four B. Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Botts? Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Asito?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Favickio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanning?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Botts?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Asito?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Favickio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanning?
Yes. Our report of committees, the ordinance committee chairman, Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. The ordinance committee met and passed several resolutions, the first being seven dash thirteen dash three, ordinance amendment of chapter seventeen, point oh four, point oh three oh, Dakota City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled zoning definition as amended in committee, August fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
entertain a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Councilman Asito?
Yes, Mr. Council President, through the chair to Mr. Lopola. I'll ask the question again for both ordinances. So basically, in layman's terms, both ordinances bring us up to date with language changes to comply with FEMA and federal regulations.
That's correct.
So that in no way, shape, or form, if a person has a parcel of land and it's part of a flood zone, does that give them any relief so that they can build on the buildable part?
If- no. I mean, the zoning ordinance is regulatory. The only place that you cannot, and we did this in the ordinance committee, the only place that you cannot build within the floodplain is within the floodway, it's a sub-designation. Other than within the floodway, is if you meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, you are permitted to build. We can't, I mean, it's a takings issue. We just prohibit it outright, we'd be buying an awful lot of land in this city. Or I would like to buy all the floodplain, I don't think the city can afford it. So it's regulatory, except for the floodway, it's not prohibitive.
May I follow up with a question, Mr. Council President?
Go ahead, Council- Go ahead, Councilman Aceto.
So if somebody had a two-acre lot and it was zoned for two acres, and 50% of the lot was considered wetlands or a flood zone, then they could not build, correct?
I'm not sure. No. I mean, they, no. Is if, first of all, if it was two acres of it were in the flood, if it's a two-acre lot and all two acres are in the floodplain, once again, is, I mean, there's also state regulations, but once again, as long as you meet the regulatory requirements for working the floodplain, and that would be for residential elevation, flood proof, flood protection, for non-residential floodproofing, and providing of compensatory storage, you can't build. It's just not in the floodway. Difference. And that's how most ordinances are structured. Like I said, we created takings case.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any other committee? Hearing no other discussion. A little clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bots?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Aceto?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanny?
Yes.
Next ordinance, Council President, 7-13-4, Ordinance Amendment of Chapter 17.16, Title 17 of Dakota City of Cranston, 2005, entitled zoning, special flood hazardous districts as amended in committee, 815, 2003. Entertainer motion.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes, Council President. May I ask a question of Mr. Lepola? Does this help out Fletcher Avenue at all?
Fletcher Avenue was, we were doing a tableau rose at Wood. It's an existing condition. The only thing that can, would help Fletcher Avenue is the programs that were ongoing. It's an existing development. Is to the extent, I mean, I'll try not to wax poetic, but to the extent that we have strong ordinances and to the extent that we have an aggressive, vigorous floodplain management, which we're beginning to move towards, it enables us to secure grants that sort of begin to help people. And that's how I think ultimately we wind up helping these people.
So that's a yes or a no?
The answer is, this regulates them, their existing development. The only thing this will do is when and if they're substantially damaged, that they do substantial improvement, they'll be subject to increased regulations. But they're there. This ordinance doesn't affect them in the sense that they're there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from any member of the committees? Hearing none. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bots?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Aceto?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanny?
Yes.
Next ordinance, Council President, 7-13-5, Ordinance Amendment Title 10, Chapter 32, Dakota City of Cranston, 2005, entitled motor vehicles and traffic, no parking on Callum Road. Entertainer motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Bots?
Thank you, Council President. I need to make an amendment on line 27. It has 150 feet. I need to change that to 100 feet. It was a little over ambitious with the distance from Reservoir Ave to the end of the property line for the business in question. So I'd like to make a motion to amend line 27 to, from 150 feet to 100 feet.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion concerning this? Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. This is the, where the fence is, we put the fence up.
That's correct, yes.
Little Caesars.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll on the amendment.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bots?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Aceto?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanny?
Yes. A motion, we need a motion on the amended version of the ordinance.
So moved.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion on the amended version? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bots?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Aceto?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanny?
Yes.
Next ordinance, 7-13-6, Ordinance Amendment Title 10, Chapter 32, Dakota City of Cranston, 2005, entitled motor vehicles and traffic, pond and orchard. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Bots?
Thank you, Council President. For those that weren't in ordinance, this ordinance being proposed is for, on Pond and Orchard, where children are actually walking to De Temple School along this path. We have a crossing guard at Park and Orchard, and when they cross there, then there's a straight line that goes to De Temple School. And the problem is, that's been pointed out by a couple of parents, one being the former president of the PTA at the school, was that one of the cross streets being pond, there's no stop signs for perpendicular traffic, which could put the kids in danger. So that's why we propose this ordinance for tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. Since there's no traffic engineering report, can we get a comment from the administration? Are they okay with this?
Through the chair. Both traffic ordinances have engineer, the engineers report. It's the law, on the pond, on the pond, it's the last page of the ordinance. On the other ordinance, it was listed separately. If you go to the last page, you'll see it.
Okay. Scratch that question.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bots?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Aceto?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanny?
Yes. Finance Committee Chairman Stychos.
We have a resolution approving real estate and tangible tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor, and that was approved by the Finance Committee.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bots?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Aceto?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanny?
Yes.
The next is a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bots?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Aceto?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanny?
Yes.
Next is a tax interest waiver approvals as recommended by the city treasurer for things like illness, hardship, error.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bots?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Aceto?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanny?
Yes.
And the final item, which was recommended by the Finance Committee, is the ordinance ratifying the agreement, contract with the firefighters' union that was negotiated by the mayor and city administration.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Stychos.
Yes. There's been a lot of talk about fiscal notes, and I'd just like to review. If you didn't look, open your email. I'll give you the fiscal note that I've put together, and I'll briefly go over the, briefly go over the differences. I think what a fiscal note should do is it should tell what the changes in the contract, how much they cost for a year, and when those costs are going to occur. So the problem that I have with the way that the city has done, with the mayor, has done this fiscal note, is that he hasn't treated all items the same. So if you're looking for what the cost is in a year, you take what, 12 months of whatever it is. So if it's a $50 increase in the uniform allowance in the first year of the agreement, you take $50, you multiply it by the number of people, that's the cost in the first year of the contract. And if that doesn't change, if there's not another increase or decrease in that item, then you don't count it anymore. It's counted once, because that's the increase. I think in, Councilman Farina would say that the first year, it's a variable cost, and after that, it's a fixed cost, so you don't count it. What, where the fiscal note gets into trouble, the administration's fiscal note gets into trouble, is it counts items different lengths of time, and thereby has a different methodology, a different system of counting for different items. The raises are the biggest part of the contract, and they're, as I see it, the biggest part of the area. Because the raises, most of the raises are on six-month increments, the administration only counted the cost of those raises for six months. So that's why when you look at the cost of the administration's fiscal note, even though we're raising salaries by 5% over the agreement, over what it would have been, it's 7% over the contract, but the firefighters already had 2% coming in the current contract, so 7 minus 2 is 5. 5%. So if you've, somewhat incredibly, the administration's fiscal note says even though salaries are going to go up 5%, the cost of that is only 2.5%. That just doesn't make any sense. And the reason that that number comes out on the administration's fee is they only, on the fiscal note, the administration, they're only counting that raise for six months. When you count each raise, the cost of it for a year, because you're trying to get the cost of everything for a year, then the value goes up to the 5% that it accurately should be. The same, another error is made in the OPEB contribution, which is an important concession from the firefighters, I'm not arguing with that, but in the first year of the contract, they agree they're going to pay $25 a month towards the health insurance upon retirement. So you figure out what the savings is for that, and that becomes the savings in the first year of the agreement. After that, you don't count it anymore in the fiscal note, because you count things only for a year. If you get a raise in the first year, you don't count it for four years, you count it for the first 12 months. If you contribute to OPEB, you count it for the first year. So by that combination of counting the raises for six months and the OPEB, considerable OPEB contribution for four years rather than one year, that throws the fiscal note off and changes it, under my estimation, using the basic number supplied by the administration on what things cost, it triples it from $250,000 to $777,000. So I find this troubling, number one, because the administration was in the, at the bargaining table, thinking it was spending 250, raising the cost of fire protection, salaries, employees' cost by $250,000 by the end of the contract, $250,000 a year, when in reality, it's $750,000. That's one thing I find troubling. The other thing I find troubling is frankly that we can't resolve this issue, and because it's all about numbers, and we don't, we can't come to an agreement on numbers because the administration just says, "You're wrong. We've always done it this way." And I present numbers, I presented memos, and there's no attempt to come to any kind of agreement. It's just, "You're wrong, and we did it right." So that's also very troubling. I think that in a democratic society, we have to have debate over things and get down to the meat of the matter. Those of us who are Democrats, our party chairman said, you know, "Vote for Democrats on the city council, because we need checks and balances." Well, this is the, this is the process of the checks and balances. So I would say to everyone who plans to run for reelection, that under this contract, in fiscal year 14, which is the year that we're in right now, the cost, the firefighting costs are reduced. In fiscal year 15, they go up slightly. In fiscal year 16, they go up quite a bit. So if you run for reelection and you win, you may be looking at a proposal for a tax increase to pay for this contract. So those are the points I want to make. I also, just to give you an example of, for the public, of the kind of thing that I've shown to the administration, that they just tell me I'm wrong. If you, if you, we picked, I picked one employee. If he got a 1.5% raise, he would get, he gets an extra $1,300 a year. If he gets a 2% raise for half a year, he gets another $89,000. All right? So those two numbers together equal more than the fiscal note that the administration, what the administration says in its fiscal note. And under the contract, that employee gets those two raises. So it just, the math doesn't add up. And I won't be voting for the contract, because the math doesn't add up, and I don't understand how the mayor can propose and endorse a contract that costs $250,000, and how the mayor can propose and endorse a contract that costs $250,000, and then, when it actually costs three times that much, not, still support the agreement. Thank you very much.
Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. I also ran the numbers for this contract, because I had to see it for myself. You know, in school, they always say, "Show the work." Well, I wanted to see the work on paper. And I only did it for the salaries, the payroll portion of the contract, because alluding to the other costs, such as the OPEB contributions and everything else, those are fixed costs. And if you take, using the OPEB example here, $58,800 in fiscal year 14, you're going to have that money each year. So we'll use an example of a bank account. You make a deposit in that bank account for $58,800 in fiscal year 14, you make that same deposit for the following fiscal years, you are going to have approximately $225,000 in that bank account that the firefighters contributed to that bank account that the city did not have to pay. That is a total savings for the city of $225,000. So I don't think that can be argued any other way, except on a fiscal note, it shows the city saved $225,000 by not having to make that contribution. So I didn't bother running the other numbers. I believe the city is absolutely correct on its fiscal note as far as those go. So I pass out to the fellow councilpeople a spreadsheet I ran regarding the payroll. And what I used is the budgeted numbers to start with on fiscal year 14. So, and I divided it by civilian and non-civilian, because in that first year, midway through the fiscal year 14, only the civilians get a 2% raise. So I split it out across the life of the contract, even though everything else was uniform after that. So if you look down at the bottom, or the second, I apologize, I probably should have printed the gridlines with this, but, and total fiscal year change at the bottom of each civilian column, so that's a total amount, either the city saved that year for both categories, or expended. So in fiscal year 14, I came up with a savings of $118,000, which is pretty close to what the fiscal note had. It might be due to the fact that I didn't get the beginning numbers that Director Strom used, but, you know, they're close enough for government work, pardon. So, you know, in agreement for fiscal year 14, I think we can agree that we're pretty much on track with what we did. So then, in fiscal year 15, again, you get the 1.5% raise in that mid-year. So of course, you have the total payroll, and you multiply that by 1.5%, and that's where you're going to get your total raise for fiscal year 15. And again, the city had $96,821, I had $98,000. Again, that's probably the difference in our starting numbers from, at the beginning of this exercise. So, again, we agree. We get a little bit off the path in fiscal year 16, not as much as Councilman Stychos alludes to. And I think it's that, again, it's that double raise in fiscal year 16, where you're getting that 1.5% raise on half the payroll at the beginning of the year. So you take that $6,233,000 in the non-civilian fiscal year 16, multiply that times 1.5%, and that's your raise. Now, when you take that 2% raise in the second half of the year, you have to do that on that 1.5% calculation that we just did, because you have to compound that into your calculation. And something also that Councilman Stychos said is that the city isn't, is going six month to six month with the raises and not including it in the following year. Well, yes, you are, because you're carrying that over. If you notice, in my calculations, in fiscal year 15, I have a total at the bottom of Then if you go to the top of the column in fiscal year 16, it's the same number. You are carrying those raises over, you're compounding them year to year. So they are being included in this. So I think the only difference Director Strom and I had in this is that calculation of that second year raise. So the city had $229,680 for fiscal year 16, I had a total of $331,000, so we're off by about $100,000. But again, using the calculations, I think, in budgeting this way, they are correct. And then if you go to fiscal year 17, the city had $134,724 for salary, I had $135,084. So again, correct. And this is, this is math. You can't change math. You can't do it any other way. You have to compound the raises, you have to carry them over the next year. So again, the total change from fiscal year 14 to fiscal year 17, a total for just salaries alone was $446,548, and your total percentage change over the cost of the contract is 3.27%. And, you know, my spreadsheet's online, if you go to the, sorry, Harold, if you're here, but if you go to patch.com, you can click on a link, you can see all the formulas I use, you can break it down any way you want, but this is the way it was done, and I believe the city is correct on what they did. So thank you, Council President, for the time.
Vice President Farina.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Stychos did mention that I would have said that salaries are calculated as an indirect expense, and other things like rent and utilities are calculated as a direct expense. And I'll tell you why I said things like that. Because a gentleman out there asked for an expert's opinion on finance. Well, my background, I'm a senior manager of expense budgeting and forecasting for CBS Caremark, so my background is in budgeting and forecasting. When you look at the fiscal note, the fiscal impact study that the administration did, I did my own. I didn't put it online, I didn't send it to all the councilmen, I did it for me, because I wanted to know what the fiscal impact of the contract was. And I come to a number that's about $40,000 away from Director Strom's. I think the issue here is the way Councilman Stychos is doing his analysis. He's not necessarily doing a fiscal note, he's doing a salary impact schedule. And because of the way the contract was negotiated, the firefighters phased in the raises over half-years to save the city money. They didn't have to do that, they did it to make the city, make the expense more palatable to the city. So I think that's the difference of opinion here, when you look at the two methods of calculating a fiscal note. A fiscal note takes the actual fiscal impact year over year, so the change every year, not the whole change, because the firefighters, though we're giving them a 2% raise in year one, are only getting 1% of that raise. So even though the salary's going up by 2%, we're only giving them 1%. So you need that to calculate the fiscal impact. You can't say that because I gave them a two-year raise in year one, six months into the year, that they get a 2% raise. It's actually a 1% net effect to the city. And that's how I understand the contract. So that's all I have to say.
Councilman Shannon Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, could I ask Councilman Stychos a question? Steve, your spreadsheet, for instance, on the OPEB contribution shows $58,800, then 000, while the spreadsheet we received from the administration shows the 588 being carried across. Now, are you saying that in fiscal year 15 and 16, they're not going to make an OPEB contribution?
No, I'm saying there's no change in their OPEB contribution. So if you want to know-
But, all right, just thinking logically, they're paying, they're paying the OPEB contribution in that fiscal year.
Well, yes, they are.
So I'm just looking at it, and if you're looking at your paycheck, and you're seeing the OPEB contribution's coming out, so that's, like Councilman Botts, is less money that the city's putting in, because the firefighters are putting in. So I can't see where 0 accurately portrays that.
Well, it portrays the change. So if you get a 1% raise, let's just, instead of 1%, let's just say $1,000, right, this year, you get a $1,000 raise, then the $1,000, and under this method, would be counted this year. It wouldn't be counted, it wouldn't be listed next year. It's just the change over a 12-month period. So if money's coming out at 25, at 58, 800 a year consistently, you only count it in the year. This is, this is an analysis of the change. Roy Damiano did an analysis of the salaries, of what the, all the raises together would cost, and that was, over the term of the contract, $900,000. Not $900,000 a year, but $900,000 more would be spent by the city on salaries than if there was no change in the contract. So if you want to use the $900,000, then you can use the 58,800 four times. But the problem is that for the wages, they don't count them for the whole length of the agreement. You've got to pick one way or the other. You can't have some items costed one way, and other items costed another way.
Okay, so can I ask a question on the salary line, and then, can I just ask one more?
Yeah, just going to wrap it up by what else we have to talk about.
So when the council vice president said that you count it as a 1% raise rather than a 2% raise, because it's a half a year, is this 96,821 along those same lines, or do you have it as a 2%?
Well, I haven't, this is the first I've seen of what Councilman Botts did. So I've sent out what I did to everybody, and I've handed it out ahead of time, so people can react to it. With the 1.5, the first raise that the firefighters are getting, the administration says in fiscal year 15, the cost of that is, I think, what do they say, $96,000, because that's half a year of the raise. I agree with that in fiscal year 15. Where I disagree is that in fiscal 16, you count that raise for a year, you've got to count another $96,000, if you're trying to figure out the annual cost of things. And so if you give a raise in the middle of the year, you, as Paul Valetta said, you do delay the raise for six months, but eventually, that pay comes up six months later.
Okay, so you're carrying the salary line item across, but you're not carrying the other ones across?
Well, you're not carrying the other one across, because it's starting in the beginning of the year. If you look down on the dental, see the dental limit? That one, that starts in the middle of the year, that cost. So there, they get this increased limit on the dental, that Bob Strom estimated to be $5,100 a year, a year. So, but because it starts in January, you should put half of it in fiscal year 15 and half 16.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Vivekial.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to the sponsor, but Steve, if you're applying that rule, which you just said on the OPEB contribution, that it's already, there's no further change in that second year, isn't that the same with some of the other items, such as the salary that's been budgeted, so that it's not increasing that same amount each and every, each year? Once it reaches a new base, then that base is carried forward until there's another increase. Otherwise, we could go back 25 years and see what the base was, and see how much we've increased our salary costs. I mean, they do go up, that's the nature of the beast. So the, by not carrying those savings on OPEB, they're going to contribute each and every year, the same thing with the COPE, they're going to pay that $20,000 in presumably each of those four years, which means it should be $80,000 savings in that category, and 235 on the OPEB. And your scenario doesn't take into account those savings.
Well, you, again, I mean, I agreed with the beginning of what you said, but again, if you're going to count the OPEB for all four years, then you have to count the first raise, the 1.5% in fiscal year, in the middle of fiscal year 15, you need to count that for two and a half years. Because you're going to get it for two and a half years. They're not going to get it for the first year and a half, but they are going to get it for two and a half years. And then you have to count the 1.5% raise that they're going to get at the beginning of fiscal year 16, you have to count that for two years. Because what, the number you're looking for, you're saying, what is the total amount that they're going to contribute to OPEB for the, over the term of the contract? And, you know, that's a legitimate number. But if you're going to do that, then you have to say, what's the total amount that mechanics pay is going to go up? Well, it's going to go up 20,000 times four, not times one, because you can, that was another one where they listed it four times.
May I have, may I make another comment, Council President? Well, I think the big picture is, is it a good contract? Is it too much to pay? You know, contracts go up. I mean, I wish my landscaper would never charge me an increase over the next four years, but that's not likely to happen. Everything goes up. I don't think that it's, the numbers are bad. We're gaining $193,000 in this next fiscal year. We're paying down, we're paying down the road a little bit more, we're giving those increases, but they've conceded to give up, the firefighters are giving up the 1% raise that was already booked for this year, so that this year, they're putting it off for another year, and they're putting, by the time they catch up, you know, they've saved the city a considerable amount of money. And I think that we've seen Director Strom, we know that our outside auditors have looked at the contracts we've done for the last, you know, four or five years. They haven't written any disclaimers or any qualifications to those contracts and those fiscal notes. So obviously, there are a lot of accountants that agree with Director Strom and how he's approaching this, and even Council Vice President Farina feels that the, you know, the budgeted items, you can't just keep, once those increases have been, those raises have been given, then that sets the new base for those pays, and we, that's what we have to pay. I think the administration and Mr. Valetta, you know, spent considerable time crafting a contract that's fair to the city and fair to the firefighters, and I think that we should, we should pass it.
Councilwoman Lee.
This, I'm moving on a little bit from the finances, and talking a little bit about the pensions, because I, I think that, although the firefighters have given up a lot, and have come to the table and been very generous, I feel like I would have liked to have seen some changes in the way the pensions are structured, to make it safer going forward. It seems like we're sort of at the same place as we have been, and I would have liked to have seen, maybe the pensions go towards the state-run pension system, or to see them go, I guess, defined contribution, I didn't realize that is, is that automatically a 401K? I'm not a finance expert in any way, but I was just feeling like the risk that we all take with these pensions over time has been demonstrated, and we're paying the price for them in our taxes. And I would like to start with these contracts, and start to see an effort being moved to rectify this situation that the city's put in with the leverage. So I guess that's, that's one of my issues. And also, I truly don't see why you can't represent the raises as a yearly raise, instead of the half-year steps. And I see, you're explaining, I'm trying to, just, reading through, the contracts are new to me this year, so I'm sort of catching up on all the intricacies, and they are intricate, and catching up with all the numbers, and I just, I kind of felt like it would have been more straightforward to represent them as a full year of 1%, 1.5%, and average that out. So that, that's my, my thoughts I'd like to put out there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Akado, and they'll move to the right side.
Thank you, Council President. As a history professor and historian, I just want to take this contract into context historically, and let the taxpayers be aware that in the last five years, the firefighters have opened up their contract twice to assist the city of Cranston during fiscal hardship. And firefighters gave back over $3 million in the last five years to the taxpayers of the city of Cranston. Mr. Valetta, the union leader for the active firefighters, played a vital role in negotiations with the retired firefighters. Mr. Valetta was instrumental in historic pension reform deal that will save Cranston taxpayers between $6 and $7 million in the next fiscal budget. So as far as the fairness of this contract- So as far as the fairness of this contract, we have a union that came to the table when the city was in desperate needs, when the state cut revenue share. And if they didn't come to the table, many services in the city would have been cut, including a number of, in the school department. And my colleague recently wrote an editorial, and in the editorial, I'd like to quote it, "It's a cities like Cranston will never restore school music and sports programs, improve other city services, or stabilize property taxes if they negotiate labor contracts like the recently negotiated fire contract." Well, I don't want to have fallacies, but it's the administration that negotiates contracts, the mayor. The mayor negotiates all contracts. What we do is we see the final analysis, and the council votes it up or down. So that's our job on the council. And the other fallacy is, music and sports programs can't be restored until the school department pays back a loan that the city council and Council President Lanning was gracious enough to give them, because they had overspent constantly, constantly overspent. Councilman Stikos and I served on the school committee. I was there when a teacher's contract was not even financially analyzed, no telling what it would cost the city. It was an exorbitant contract that my colleague, Mr. Stikos, voted against, and the council president made sure that, I had a conflict, I couldn't be there, because I would have voted against it, ended up not voting on it. But these things like this occurred, which put the city in dire straits. Now, if my colleague wants to save on this end, in order to send more money to the school department, they're just going to spend it exorbitantly, doesn't make sense to me. And the other statement my colleague made, he said, if we vote on this and those who were fortunate to get reelected, we may face a tax increase. My colleague this year advocated a tax increase. I don't know if it was 10 or 15 cents, I don't know what it was, but he advocated tax increases. Tax increases are no strangers to the councilman award one. I am going to support this contract because the firefighters came to the table, came to the table at a time when the city of Cranston really needed help, and they were good enough to, to help the taxpayers. So I will support this contract.
Councilman Asido.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the chair to Director Strom. How many contracts have we negotiated with the city since you've been here?
This, this is number seven, so we have six complete.
And at any time during those seven contracts, just to follow up what Councilman, my colleague Councilman Vivekio said, have the auditors ever written a management letter or a deficiency saying that we either overspent it or the contracts were not proper?
No, what they do is when they come in every fiscal year to do an audit, they review the contracts, make sure that the contracts are up to date, they review certain components of it, specifically salary and benefits and things of that nature, and they make sure that we're following the, the percentages and the different amounts that has been negotiated. And never once has it ever been brought to my attention that there's ever been a problem.
To follow up with my colleague, Councilman Arquetteto, said, this current budget we're in is a zero tax increase to the taxpayers.
That is correct.
In your opinion, this contract, do we have enough money budgeted for this year? And can you project into next year to say that it's not going to be a burden on the taxpayers?
Well, for fiscal year 14, it's certainly not a burden because the fire has given back money to the city. So we've budgeted approximately 200,000 more than what we're going to have to pay out to the fire, because they were decent enough to come to the table and give back a 1% increase. Don't forget, when we did the budget, that was in May, we didn't have a, a contract in place by the fire department, you know, an agreement, I should say. So they, we're actually saving money this year. And going forward, that, the increase in 15 is not a major increase at all, because we certainly have enough money to take care of that as well.
Are there any numbers with the year that just passed, initial numbers to show if the city could possibly be showing a surplus?
It's something I would not want to convey, but I can tell you, it's, it's a hefty surplus. And one other thing I'd like to mention, too, there's been a lot of talk about giving more money to the schools. The school surplus is double what our surplus is going to be this year.
Okay. And just for the record, Mr. Council President, while I appreciate the spreadsheet that Councilman Botts did and the work that Councilman Stikos put in, and I know I've had a couple of conversations with Councilman Farina, the fact that we have a very qualified director of finance handling the finances of the city and who's telling us that this is a good contract, we can afford it, and there's no issues during the length of the contract, I'll be voting in favor of this contract.
Council Vice President Farina.
As a follow-up to Councilman Asido's questions, through the chair to the Director of Finance, you've done seven separate contracts?
This is the seventh, yes.
And we've never had an issue where you've gone over a salary line item and come back to this council and ask for more money based on your analysis of those contracts?
Never happened, once.
Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be, I'll be brief. You always strive for perfection, and in this contract, there are a couple of items that, you know, I think could have been changed, in my opinion, for the better. But overall, I think this is a fair contract. The positives outweigh the negatives, in my opinion. And the OPEB contributions is definitely a step in the right direction. The salary increases, according to my calculations, 3% over four fiscal years, 3.27% over four fiscal years. Again, I think it's a fair and equitable contract for both the city and the firefighters, so I will be voting in favor of this contract. Thank you.
Councilman Stikos.
Just very briefly, the auditor, the city auditor does not audit the fiscal notes. The city auditor, as, as the finance director pointed out, he looks at the contracts and sees if the city is paying the amounts that are in the contract. And that, and I have no, I'm not saying that, that the city won't make budget, but I'm saying the budget is going to have to be more to cover the cost of the contract than is being projected. My argument is with the projections, not the, what may happen down the road with the financial statements.
Mr. Strom, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to Councilman Stikos. I guess there's a confusion here. I did not mean the city auditor, I meant our outside auditors braver. That's the distinction between the two.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Council President, I think we've reached an impasse as far as, I think we might have to agree to disagree on this. I would make a motion to move the question.
Second. Motion made to move the question, and there's a second. Clerk, it's not debatable. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
I have a question, are we moving the question of the, the finance report, or this is...
It's to take a vote. It's either yes or no.
On the whole contract, oh. I'll vote yes on the contract.
Councilman Stikos?
No.
Councilman Botts?
Yes.
Councilman Arquetteto?
In lieu of everyone spoke once, I'll vote yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanning?
Yes. Now we vote on the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Vote for the question, a second.
There was one.
There was one on the floor? Okay.
We have one on the floor from...
Okay. Clerk, please take the roll on the ordinance.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
No.
Councilman Botts?
Yes.
Councilman Arquetteto?
Yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanning?
Yes. Moving on, Public Works Committee Chairman Asido.
Yes. Ordinance 5-13-4, ordinance and amendment of Title 13, the code of the city of Cranston 2005, entitled Public Service Sewer Connection Permits. As amended in committee on August 5th, the Public Works Committee met and unanimously approved this ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Councilman Asido?
Yeah, just for public knowledge, what this ordinance basically does is, it codifies the sewer permit process where there was kind of no process before. We have both city residents connecting to the system and out-of-city residents. So if you're a Cranston taxpayer, it's an administrative thing through the Public Works Department, and if you're an out-of-town person trying to connect to our system, you have to go in front of the Public Works Committee and the full council to get approval to connect, so that some of the questionable connections that happened in the past won't happen again. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
There was already a motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilman Santa Maria?
I have just one quick question to the sponsor. Are any, we have a, a list of fees, is there any fines if they pull this again?
No, that was going to be the second phase, talking to the solicitor, so there'll probably be an amendment to this ordinance within the next 45 to 60 days.
Thank you. I think this is a great, a great piece of legislation, I'll be voting yes on this.
Okay. Any other discussion on the legislation? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Botts?
Yes.
Councilman Arquetteto?
Yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanning?
Yes. Safety Service License Committee Chairman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance 7138, ordinance and amendment of Title 5.64 of the code of the city of Cranston 2005, entitled Business License and Regulations, Public Entertainment Exploration Date. Council President, this will just make the renewal date coincide with the renewal for their liquor license, so they'll get one bill for their liquor license and their expansion of service rather than the way it is now, which would be in the mid-year. So this is just a, kind of a tidying up of the regulation to make it easier for the clerk's office, and I recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Botts?
Yes.
Councilman Arquetteto?
Yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Vivekio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanning?
Yes. Moving on to the Claims Committee, Chairwoman Lee.
This is a report for informational purposes only. We issued $264.98 for a broken windshield to Geraldine Cannon, and Angelina Agen had vehicle damage that totaled $145.77, and we have another broken windshield that we contributed $87.50 to. And that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Public hearing on any docketed or undocketed items. Anybody from the public like to speak on any subject, please come up. Give your name and address for the record, please. You're allowed four minutes.
Richard Tomlin's 400 Farmington Avenue. When I stood up here last, I said something to the effect this was a well-engineered contract, and it was. It's politically deft. I think Councilwoman Lee hit on it when she said it was very complicated, but I'm sure she changed her mind. There's been a lot of political pressure, obviously, to make this contract work. Couple of other things. We shouldn't bring the school department in here, we shouldn't take advantage of the children in any discussion. And I think Mr. Strom said the school department, unless I didn't hear correctly, was giving twice as much under budget this year. And they are on a fine, they are on a fine path, I know that for a fact. So this council member, everybody here, should want our children to be educated to the best, to the fullest, which they're not now. So to use them as political pawns is, at best, degrading to the offer. The other thing is on numbers, numbers don't lie. That's one of the worst comments anybody could make. I've sat in meetings with two big eights in those days, given the same set of numbers, come up with different conclusions. There's all reasons. There's certainly accounting rules, sometimes it's to do with the company itself, sometimes it's to do with state law, federal law. So numbers, numbers are used all the time for various reasons. So I don't blame Mr. Stikos for coming up with his analysis. Somebody should. And somebody should have come up with a different analysis. The other analysis that were made were, you know, kind of political, too. All they did is follow exactly what the administration does. And we've proven, if you want any proof about what happens with numbers, right now there are what was big eight firms, either the chiefs of those are going to jail or they're paying heavy fines. And you can't say that they did that on purpose. They come up with a set of numbers that was proven, at least legally, in the, in the law field wrong. So just keep in mind, any contract, any contract, any set of numbers can be, has to be developed on different types of criteria. You've done a little bit better job tonight, I see, but we all knew it was a foregone conclusion, and the arguments were really exactly as I thought they would go down tonight. We had a couple, I was surprised at the numbers contract and the school contract, the school idea of bringing this into it, but other than that, it is what it is, and I think Ms. Lee knows. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to speak on any docketed or undocketed item? Please step forward, give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gail Donnelly, and I live at 77 Robert Circle. I'm just going through my notes here, and it says that Mr. Stikos, it's, you printed, you wrote on Monday, July 2013, "I have personally told the company that the city would be interested in at least some of the property for a park. This discussion cannot get underway until it is clear that the land would be acquired by the company that is safe for recreational use." Is that a truism? I mean, you did write it, and it is on one of your sites, and it said that you personally told the company that the city would be interested in buying some of this land. I haven't heard a word of that yet. I'm just asking if that is a truism.
Councilman Stikos, would you like to read?
I have it here printed out from the site that was on.
The, the council passed a parks plan about two years ago, and in that plan, which is just a plan, doesn't have any money expended, part of the Sebogaii property, the Belfont...
It's BASF, not Sebogaii.
BASF property.
Thank you.
The Belfont Pond is one of the items on that. And the planning director, who I don't think is here anymore, has talked with BASF, I believe, about donating the land.
And the city is amiable to accepting the land and all the responsibilities to...
No, no, as they said in the next sentence, the discussion can't even get underway until the environmental reports are done.
I'm just wondering what would prompt you to say that the city would be interested in purchasing or obtaining the land if that really wasn't a truism, because it, you know, I mean, with so many attachments to it, I, I don't understand how they could be interested. When they turned it down, it was offered to them for a dollar, I do believe. When they turned it down, it was offered to them for a dollar, I do believe, at one point, and it was going to be a parking space for large equipment. I'm new to politics, so forgive me, but, you know, it just struck me as a little funny that that would come across as the city being interested. You know, is anybody else aware that the city is interested in purchasing some of this land?
Well, the Parks Plan was approved, as I said, by the council and signed by the mayor. So there's interest. Is the city going to buy it? I have no idea. Is the city going to accept it as a donation? I have no idea. But that discussion doesn't start until the environmental reports are in for exactly the reasons that you said.
Okay. I think that's one of the things that frustrates us as a concerned group of neighbors, is that we feel that we have been put off and put off and put off by the wheels of politics, as I'm finding that they turn very slowly. We're asking your help and the mayor's help because BASF is such a big company. I mean, I've called them every week, the Community Relations Department, and have yet to talk to anybody in New Jersey. So, you know, thank you for your time, and I just wanted to clarify a couple of points. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on any docketed or undocketed item? All right, hearing none, or seeing no hands raised, I close that portion of this council Now we move on to election of city officials. Is there any election of city officials?
I have none.
None. Report of city offices. Are there any reports?
I have none.
Executive Communications, does the administration have anything to report? Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Council President. The administration respectfully submits that Lieutenant Dean Brockaway is submitting a request to be continued in service.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilwoman Lee? Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Botts?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Favickio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Council President Lanning?
Yes. Council President Communications, we went through a long and exhaustive process with the firefighters' contract. We met several times, we had an executive session, a lot of yelling and screaming, but overall, we felt it was a fair contract, and the vote of this council reflects the view of the majority, the vast majority council people. Mr. Strom did an excellent job, and I think the way he does that financial report is the same way almost every community on an island does it. To change that procedure is comparing apples to oranges, and that's what most of us perceived. We continue to work well together as a council. We do have disagreements at times, but we are here to do the people's business and do what's best for the taxpayers of this city. And that's why we voted for this contract, because it's not a big burden. The fire department gave up an awful lot in the past when we were struggling, I mean, really struggling on the point of insolvency. They gave up raises, they gave up all kinds of benefits, and they pulled us through when we needed help. And all they're asking for is what's fair, and I believe they're going to get it. Thank you. Councilmember Communications, Council Vice President Farina?
Thank you, Council President. I had a question to the administration on vandalism with the former location of Meatball Mikes. I called the administration a couple of times last week. I'm sure they have something for me tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Farina. Our Director of Constituent Affairs, Marissa Campisani, has been in touch with our code enforcement, and Director Pykel did inform her that he has been in touch with the property owners, and they're working on cleaning up that site, and it probably will be done within the week.
Thank you. And my second one's more of a statement. I just want to thank the administration, and more importantly, Tony Littori for updating some of the playgrounds out there. I have two little kids, a four-year-old and a two-year-old, and there were a lot of playgrounds that were in disrepair, so they took bond money, and they fixed four or five of the playgrounds in this city to make the city a better place to live. So I thank the administration and Tony Littori for getting that done for us.
Thank you, Councilman, and it shows what we can do in the spirit of cooperation. We couldn't do it without you guys as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sina Maria?
Thank you, Council President. Will Martin Plainfield Pike still haven't got a local contact, and Congress has asked for one more time to look into it. I will say that I called the gentleman in Missouri, and he pretty much refused to give me a local contact, said he didn't have to. I quoted him the state law, which says, yes, he does, and the conversation didn't end well, so just kind of ask if the administration can get us a local contact. There are other issues, if there's a fire there, if there's vandalism. This guy's not going to get on a plane from Missouri. He has to have a local contact, so can we get a local contact?
Councilman Santa Maria, yes, I'm aware of the conversation you had with the gentleman from Missouri, and we're working to set up a method of communication with a local contact. He does have a property manager slash observer, but he didn't want to give us the number for that particular person, so we're trying to figure out a different way in which we can have a local contact. And it may entail going through the listed agent at the Secretary of State's website. That's something we're looking into.
So if there's a fire there, that's my question, there's a fire, say it has nothing to do with overnight, if there's a fire there, who do they call? They have to have a local contact.
Well, like I said, he has a property manager or a person who observes and keeps a lookout for those overnight trucks. We just don't know who it is or how to contact that person, so I would imagine that if something like that happened at the location, this person would miraculously appear and reveal themselves. But in all seriousness, we are working to resolve the situation.
Okay, and I just have a couple, Twenty-seventh Vigilance Street and the old Garzilli's Bakery in Knightsville, both, one's a foreclosure, the grass needs to be cut. So if you could have inspections go take a look at those two places?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Favickio, you got your hand?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Just one follow-up to what Councilman Vice President Farina said. I know there was a question last meeting about the Brayton Avenue Field and the playground, and I did go by, and they were replacing the equipment there, so it had been taken down, but in order to be replaced, so that, I believe, is accomplished.
Councilman Stychos?
I wanted to— if the administration had any information on the status of the environmental cleanup at this BASF property and the status of the building inspection?
I was just briefed on this issue today, so I'm not entirely up on the entirety of facts, but I do know that the administration, the city, from our perspective, has no interest in becoming responsible party or buying the site while it's still under remediation, if in fact it still is. So that has to be established. We are seeking to get an update on that particular situation. We understand that the city, through its inspectors, has been going to the site. Mr. Holt went to the site on July nineteenth. He gave a report to the city. There was additional cleanup that was specified by him, and BASF was responsive and cleaned up accordance with what he cited. We have the fire chief here tonight. He would say that on July twenty-fourth, the fire marshal conducted a spot inspection of the site, and there were no particular fire issues which were identified. The history of the site is that BASF has assumed the environmental responsibility for the property when it acquired Sebagi in two thousand and nine. In terms of what the condition of that now is, we understand that the buildings are secured with fencing and the property is patrolled. The company states that it maintains a rodent control problem for several years. They have set traps throughout the site and the property. And there have been recent steps that BASF has taken to address the condition of the property. Currently, there are no chemicals stored in any of the buildings on the site, and the future use of the property will be determined once the remediation process is complete. So I think the key for the city is that we don't want to undertake a substantial liability at this time for an environmental cleanup, while, you know, just new to the situation, I'm hearing constituent issues with respect to the condition of the property, and certainly, you know, that needs to be addressed, which is not really evident from the safety reports. Obviously, my comments here don't address how the people feel living next to that site, nor could they, but those have to be addressed as well, and we can work with Director Lopez and Marissa to try to address and inter— a dialogue with BASF about that, but I can say with certainty that there's really no drive to acquire a, what could be a liability for the city of cleanup.
Councilman Stychos?
I agree a hundred percent, and that's all I've ever said to BASF, is there can't even be a discussion until the environmental reports are in. I mean, they would like to unload it. I don't—I think if—I don't—remember if you were around when the trafficante administration had the plan to assume it for a dollar, and part of that plan was that the city would be—it was in the agreement, the city would have to pay for the attorney that Sebagi would pick if there were any environmental problems in the future, and that basically sunk the, along with a lot of other things, sunk the agreement. So please don't think that I'm advocating acquiring environmental—
I didn't think one way or the other.
Okay. What about that Inspector Holt's report? Can I get a copy of that?
I can ask Director Lopez if he could give me a copy. I don't know if they're notes, they're report, but yeah, I can get whatever's—
And is it—is—do you happen to know if it's a code violation to have boarded up windows for twenty-five, thirty years?
I don't know that.
Do you don't know one way or the other?
I don't know one way or the other.
I'm sorry.
I don't know one way or the other.
Okay.
Doesn't seem preferable.
Thank you for that.
If that's the question.
Councilman Asido?
Yes, through the chair, Councilman Stychos. Steve, if you want to put that as a agenda item on Public Works so we get an update, or if some of the neighbors want to come and voice their complaints, if it's okay with the Council President, it's okay with me that we could put it under Public Works and hear it, so, you know, we could hear it more frequently and get some action done on it. But that's your call. I'm willing to do that, so.
Thank you. I think we may—maybe we need a—an ordinance that sets a time limit on boarded up windows.
Okay, so if it's okay through the chair to the administration, if we could have—put it on a monthly update on the Public Works Committee, and that way there maybe we can expedite some of the things here.
Yeah, we can do that. And in addition to that, there are two contact people, which we can discuss in committee. One from Riedem, who deals with interfaces through the EPA, and the other who handles the Superfund sites, and perhaps they would be better able to determine a remediation schedule for capping and for making sure that there's no further contamination on the site.
Through the chair, do we know, Evan, when the last time we've had any correspondence with them, so in the property?
I have no problem if you—if you would want. Both of their emails are on this. I have no—no problem emailing them and copying you on it.
See, maybe if they could come in front of the committee and—
I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
I could—
Councilman Stychos?
They—they're monitoring the—just so you know, the DEM, there are two sides of the street, Mill Street. DEM's in charge of one side, EPA's in charge of the other side. They are essentially waiting for BASF to give them a final remediation plan. Then they have to review that plan and decide whether they think it's proper or not. So as far as I know, and I'm not up to date, but BASF hasn't submitted those plans yet. But that, when we had a meeting, we had a community meeting maybe a year and a half ago, and both of the environmental—the DEM person came and the EPA person came, and that's pretty much what they—they said, so. And so we—we're—could I just—Mr. Lopez, will you be getting me that inspector's report, or?
Yes, I can talk to Director Pykel and find out where that report is and get—in touch with you, and we can go over it.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Botts?
Thank you, Councilman. Through the chair, Chief Seth Lopez. I have a question regarding Gordon Street. It seems like one half of the street is being paved. Is there a plan in place to do the other half of the street going from, say, Marlboro Street down to the—to the pond or the lake there?
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Botts, yes, I can tell you that it appears that there was a miscommunication with the paving people. The original intent of paving both of those streets was due to the water damage from Spectacle—is it Spectacle Pond at the end there?
Right, yeah.
And the culvert that's at the end. Obviously, when it's rainy or there's a flooding issue, the asphalt—the street itself suffers a lot of water damage. So in our planning, that was the genesis of selecting those streets to be done. Unfortunately, somewhere in the communication and execution, it was not understood by the contractor that we were going all the way to the water. So what's going to happen is, because of the way paving is done, they have to have a milling machine, and that machine costs a ton of money to have out. So once the machine is gone, it's not financially practical for the city to just call it back, even though the mistake was, you know, theirs or misunderstanding was theirs. So what we're going to do is, we're going to revisit those streets, probably in the spring, when we're doing the rest of the paving project that's been approved this year. So it is our intention to make sure that those streets are taken care of, but I ask the residents on that end of the street to be patient. We will get to them, but it will not be until the spring.
Great, thank you. I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other council member communications? Hearing none, I close that portion of this council meeting. Old—excuse me, old business, is there any old business listed?
There is none.
Introduction of new business? Is there any new business?
Yes, there is. Proposed ordinance eight dash thirteen dash oh-one, an amendment of Title three point oh-eight of the Code of the City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled Rev— 2005 entitled Revenue and Finance Tax Assessment Board of Review, sponsored by Council President Lanny, Council Vice President Farina and Councilman Sito, to be referred to Ordinance Committee for hearing on September 12th. Proposed ordinance 8-13-02, an amendment of Title 5.64 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Theatrical Performances, Shows and Exhibits, Public Entertainment, sponsored by the Safety Services Committee, to be referred to Safety Services for hearing on September 9th. Proposed ordinance 8-13-03, an amendment of Title 9.08 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Offenses to Property, Tree Planting on Back of Sidewalk Program, sponsored by Councilman Stikos, to be referred to the Ordinance Committee for hearing on September 12th. Proposed ordinance 8-13-04, an amendment of Title 5.44, itinerant food vendors sponsored by Councilman Fivickio and Botts, to be referred to Safety Services for hearing on October 7th. Proposed ordinance 8-13-05, an amendment of Title 10.40 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Miscellaneous Traffic Regulations, No Traffic Trailer Parking on Cranston Street North Side Between Victoria and Dyer, sponsored by Councilman Sito, to be referred to Ordinance Committee for hearing on September 12th. Proposed ordinance 8-13-06, an amendment of Title 10.32 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Stopping, Standing and Parking on Certain Streets, No Tractor Trailer Parking on Cranston Street North Side Between Victoria and Dyer, sponsored by Councilman Sito, to be referred to the Ordinance Committee for hearing on September 12th. Proposed ordinance 8-13-07, an amendment of Title 10.40 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Traffic Regulations for Specific Streets, Crosswalk on Gansett North Side of Its Intersection with Berkeley Street, sponsored by Councilman Sito, to be referred to Ordinance Committee for hearing on September 12th. Proposed ordinance 8-13-08, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005 entitled Zoning, A Change of Zone for the East Side of Power Road. This is a petition filed by Crown Holdings 2 LLC to be referred to the Ordinance Committee for hearing on October 17th. A five-year commercial tax incentive application from CMR Enterprises LLC, that should say Rafa Yoga rather than Fafa, 19 Sharp Drive, to be referred to Finance Committee for hearing on September 12th. A pole location request from National Grid for Midvale Avenue to be referred to Public Works for hearing on September 9th. A joint pole location from National Grid in Verizon for a location on Carolina Street, also to be referred to Public Works for hearing on September 12th. We have the following claims to be referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on September 9th. A property damage claim from Ann Kutu and Renee Kutu of alleged incident on August 18th, 2013. A property damage claim from Nancy Hilton from alleged incident on June 25th, 2013. A property damage claim from Robert Luzie from alleged incident on March 14th, 2013. A property damage claim from Curtis Mathow from alleged incident on July 9th, 2013. A property damage claim from Andrea Cibriano from alleged incident on October 2nd, 2013. That is all the new business I have.
Is there a motion?
Motion to sign to the Property Committee.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee? Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Botts?
Yes.
Councilman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilman Sito?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Fivickio?
Yes.
Council Vice President Farina?
Yes.
Councilman, Council President Lanny?
Yes.
Miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk, Department of Transportation, Police Detail.
That, that has already, we've received the executed copy that was filed with my office last week.
No further business on the council agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned.